To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us now have a moment of silent reflection on the passing of Senator John McCain, who was also a Vietnam prisoned war survivor, and the death of the Sunbury resident Joseph Troxel Jr., who lost his life in yesterday's vehicle crash on Chesapeake Street. Thank you. Please have a seat. Please remember to place your cellphones on silent or shut the phones. Roll call please.
Carl Levitch?
Here.
Kramer? Right there. You're Reese?
Here.
Ister?
An executive session was held prior to this meeting, August 27th at 5:00 PM, to discuss personnel matters. Are there any... Real quick, is there any audience comment on agenda items only at this time? Regina, please stand.
Regina Russell, community activist. I'm just curious as to why the home that collapsed on Penn Street, how come that didn't make the papers? And I know you're not journalists, but I'm just curious.
We're not in charge of the newspaper. Francis, do you want to answer?
I will. The first one did a couple of months ago. Her was there.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
The first one did. I was there with her. We walked it and with her. So there was one in already. You might have missed it. And actually, there will be another one in tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I'm here tonight for the final public hearing for 2018 CDVG grant application. There's a clipboard going around for signatures. If you please sign that, DCD loves to see the members of the community that show up here like you guys do. So it's good to have record of how many people were here to hear my spiel tonight. And I've passed out agendas as well. If you pass them to the end, I'll pick them up and recycle them on my way out, if you would like me to do that for you. So today, we're here. We had a first public hearing in project selection. And the council has voted to spend $296,249 of CDVG funding, which is their annual allotment for 2018, on the Reagan Street flood mitigation project. $247,729 will go there. And grant administration will take up the rest of the grant, and that is $48,520. Are there any questions about Reagan Street flood mitigation project? I don't know if we talked about it at the last meeting, if there's someone here that's new and would like to hear about it?
I just have questions with curiosity, if you will.
Sure.
I believe it is back in 1960 something. I read an article when I was researching about Reagan Street that the state had come forward with some monies to redo that area in regards to the water situation. Jim, you might not know about that, but maybe it's somewhere in the archives or whatever.
Okay. What are you getting at? Help me out here.
Well, is there going to be additional monies contributed to that project? And my second question is, now that I have your attention, thank you.
You have my attention the whole time, but you speak, I stop.
Oh, even when you're in the neighborhood, I get it. Is the municipal authority going to be involved in that as well?
Yes. And back to your comment. When Rolf Phillips was still in office, PennDOT came and did a feasible study. And they determined it was a million and something. He used to take and try to update that pipe, a short section, then stop the flooding. At that point in time, PennDOT walked away from the project.
Was that first in the '60s?
No. I would have said it'd be in the last 20 years. Rolf Phillips was still in office when it happened.
Okay, because like I said, when I was researching that type of situation, because as you know, my property floods, then feed from my back door. I've said it for how many years? I found that article, that state had come up with some sort of monies for, to try to resolve that issue.
City of Sunbury is involved, municipal authorities involved. PennDOT has rescheduled their paving project into 2020. Okay?
Okay.
That was slated for 2019, which that will help on the paving aspect once the streets redone Reagan Street. And then there's grant money coming in also.
So is that going to be done between Fourth Street and Second Street? Or is it...
From front to fourth is initial phase one.
Okay.
But at the end of phase one, correct me if I'm wrong, the flooding will be stopped? Phase one is all it takes to stop the flooding?
Not... On Reagan?
On Reagan?
Not totally. Because it takes all the phases to put all the pieces together for the final phase, which would be the pump station separation. Okay?
Okay.
That's true.
Reagan Street.
Reagan Street, yes.
Yes. Yeah, that's how we're doing this.
Probably not your property, probably not our property.
No.
Mine's above, just above Quacker.
Yeah, that'll be continued, like, continued on phase two.
But if there's a bigger pipe, it won't take... Okay.
And then also, with PennDOT being involved, and you ask where they're going to go, they are then going to continue paving all the way up to 11th. So that was in their plans to go from front to 11th. And they said that they were waiting to help us out, but then they're going to continue the long way up.
Is it just going to be paving?
Yeah, that's PennDOT's part. This is paving.
Gerbing and all of those are on here.
Paving is all they put in there. From fourth, that's their road, so that's what they put in there.
Okay. And just one other question while I have your attention. What's going on up on Front Street where the little green flies?
Excuse me, Julie. Not to interrupt you, but this is just for Linda Sterling right now for CDCA business. Can you save your comments until the end?
Well, it might have to do with the whole thing.
I don't know.
Okay.
I see notes.
I have one more question, please, Ms. Sterling.
Sure.
Regina Russell. All of the projects that are being done, when they're inspected, are they done by HUD inspectors? Or are they done by a private company that is certified to do the inspections of these projects?
They're done by a private third-party company. Sometimes the engineer, in Sunbury's case, there are several engineers that are certified to do that work. And Sunbury typically uses an engineer that is certified, so then it's their option to have them inspect. But there are inspections required for every CDVG job before the bills can be paid.
And that still falls under the responsibility of CDCA?
Well, no. It's our responsibility to make sure it happens. It can be paid for with grant money. It's my job to make sure that it happens. So before we sign an invoice, every time an invoice is paid on CDVG money, it comes here first for a public meeting. And the public has an opportunity to ask questions about it, and then the council votes. Before that happens, the work that's been done, that's being paid for, is inspected. And the engineer signs off on it. Then the council votes, and then Mayor Karlovic can sign it. And then they send it to me. And then I can process it for payment, because this is not my money. There has to be strict protocols in place for me to make sure that I can prove definitively that the way that we're invoicing is the way that the city wanted to have the money spent. Sure. Any other questions on the project selected for funding or the grant administration for the 2018 CDVG funds? Later in the meeting tonight, the city will be asked to vote on a resolution authorizing the submission of the application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for this block grant program. The city has the legal authority and responsibility under something called Act 79 to apply for this money. And that money is set aside... And that money is set aside for the city of Sunbury according to a contract that comes down from the federal governor. And the city council is familiar with the requirements of the program, but it's my job to make sure of that. There's something called a statement of assurances that they'll sign. But my role with the city is to make sure, to advise them so that CDVG regulations are followed, because there's a lot of them. And so whereas the city of Sunbury wishes to apply for these funds, this resolution will allow Mayor Karlovic to sign the documents, enabling the application to go through. There'll be about four or five different ones of them. The first of which will be this resolution that will be on the agenda after my meeting is closed. So I just wanted to give you an opportunity to ask any questions about the resolution.
I guess, what is the resolution saying?
Well, I just went over, what I just...
Okay.
I mean, I can read it verbatim if you want me to, but I just hit the highlights.
What's the $48,000?
That's for grant administration. Eighteen percent of CDVG grants can be paid, can be used to cover the cost of administering a grant. That money goes to CDCA. That's how we're paid for administering the CDVG grant to the town. So we, for that funding, we do the grant process, the times that you see me here. We also fulfill all the reporting requirements. There's 11 reports that are required by the state to be filled out about how this money is used each year. Some of them are quarterly. There's also invoicing to be done where it's a very... Everything about this grant program seems to be pretty laborious. So there's a lot of steps involved in the invoicing. And most municipalities find that it's more cost-effective for us to do the administration for them, because we have a large stack, and that's all we do.
One more question, Linda. So C...
CDCA?
Yes. CDCA does not write the grants. It was Cheryl, who was writing the grants for CDCA, and then you just do the administration.
No, no, no. I write the grant.
You write the grants for the city?
Yeah, even though...
I'm confused, because I was like, giving a question, she wrote grants as well.
Oh, Cheryl Delcy, who works for the city. She writes other grants.
Okay.
CDVG grant money is different in many other grant programs. There, it is ruled by legislation. So you don't just read an application and fill it out. There's 100 pages of federal regulation that have to be followed for this grant program. And there's a lot of other things that get added to it, like the MBEWBE requirements. If you go out to bid to give work to women enterprises, minority enterprises, Section 3 for low to moderate income housing. There's a lot of regulations that are tied to this money. And I don't want to take up all your meeting. I'm happy to answer questions as long as you want. But I actually meet with you all and make sure that I'm satisfied that I understand your wishes for the grant. And I work with committees to understand the grant, and with the engineer to understand the project. And then I put together the information, photos, documentation, and defend the project and explain to DCD why Sunbury should be allowed to use their money in this particular way. So yeah, I do write the grant, too.
And you're responsible for all audits that may come from the Department of Public?
Actually, the city already gets its own audit. So the CDVG program is audited through the city audit, but they come to me and ask questions, and I give them the information that they need to make sure the program's been run legally.
Thank you.
Sure. These are all good questions. Other questions?
The answer is yours.
It's true.
Not yours, I mean just Jim's.
Well, thank you for saying that. I was a little worried until you clarified it. Any others? So Terry, if you're satisfied, Mary, you can close the meeting. Just half a minute's reflect, please, that the CDVG hearing was closed, and then the council, we can start.
You would like us to grant this resolution, right?
Yes, when our meeting starts. Yes.
Then the CDCA meeting is closed. And the city council meeting begins.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
All right, well, then I make a motion to pass the resolution to apply for the funding.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister? Carl Levitch?
Yes.
So our solicitor is going to speak about the public nuisance for Council members.
Right there, right now.
We received several documents from the redevelopment authority relative to several properties in the city. The first resolution is declaring various properties a public nuisance under a third class senior code. Whereas the property owners have been listed, located, and notified of numerous citations, warnings, and correspondence. The city would act as the Board of Health pursuant to 11 PACSA 12301 in adopting this ordinance. The properties listed on Exhibit A are located in the city and are detrimental to the public health. The Code Enforcement Office shall be designated to proceed with abatement of the public nuisance of these properties, with notice to be served on the property owners and lien holders. And the city and the redevelopment authority are authorized to proceed with eminent domain proceedings against the aforementioned public nuisance properties. That is the first resolution for passage by the council this evening.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer? Oops. Right there?
Yes.
We also have a second resolution, which is along the same lines as the first. This adds the new properties listed in the first nuisance resolution to the ongoing properties listed through the city as public nuisances worthy of abatement through eminent domain proceedings. This resolution simply adds those properties to the already existing list.
Make a motion to a second.
Ister? Karlovic?
Yes.
Rightner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
I'll go with the... The third resolution is in regard to a property located at 245 through 247 Pennsylvania Avenue, which is a property that we discussed earlier this evening. Actually, as of Ms. Russell's question, the council is taking action as a Board of Health in declaring that property to be a public nuisance and declares a summary abatement of the public nuisance as is necessary. And is designated, the Code Enforcement Office is designated to proceed with abatement of that public nuisance being the building that fell down.
I think it's 245 and 247 Penn Street.
Oh, they have...
Pennsylvania Avenue.
All right. And they have it on there. So I'll put Penn Street. Thank you, Jim.
Do you need a motion on that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Carl Levitch?
Yes.
Rightner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Finally, on the last resolution of the evening, there is again an authority of the city of Sunbury to declare properties a public nuisance. This is regarding the sister property to the last property located at 241 through 243 Penn Street, Sunbury. There was an attempt to remove the backdoor porch structure. The structure collapsed and thereby caused damage to the rest of the existing structure. Whereas the city council takes this action formally acting as a Board of Health and declares the property at 241 through 243 Penn Street, Sunbury, a public nuisance, and declares the summary abatement of that nuisance is necessary. And the Code Enforcement Office shall be designated to proceed with abatement and notice will be served as necessary or as legally required on the property owner and the owner.
Make a motion.
Rightner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Carl Levitch?
Yes.
My final bit of information is that pursuant to discussions apparently between, or involving the Sunbury redevelopment authority, the redevelopment authority has granted by deed back to the city real property, which is located at 1027 Keller Street, next to the playground that's existing there. My understanding is it's a grassy area that is currently used as a portion of the existing playground. And the redevelopment authority is simply deeding that back to the city. I would ask that someone make a motion that we accept the deed from the redevelopment authority, allow me to sign the same as attorney for the grantee, so that it can be duly filed.
Make a motion.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rightner?
Yes.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
So because Cheryl Delcy is leaving us, we have to reassign the environmental review certifying officer for CDVG funds. So I'll make a motion that we accept this resolution to accept our city clerk, Terry Speck, as the new environmental review certifying officer.
Second. Ister?
Yes.
Carl Levitch?
Yes.
Rightner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
All right. All right. One of the candidates that recently voted to hire, included with stipulations and who was still an Act 120 school for the Sunbury Police Department, has notified us today that he has withdrawn his application with us. And just to give you a quick update while we're on that topic, we recently held our second civil service testing this past weekend. We received only four applications, and only two candidates showed up to actually participate in the testing. I will present the two applicants to be hired by council after all required stages have been fulfilled. Councilman Ister on the engineering list.
First bill. Invoice 180287 to the sum of $2,500 to CES for Phase 4 on Chesapeake Street. Make a motion to pay that invoice.
Second.
Thank you.
I think they want to know where it's coming from, because it can't come from CDVG.
Hold the table up. Hold that till we talk to the county. Next invoice, the WPA wall. Invoice that 180286 with a sum of $4,302 on the 10th sentence. Yes, yes, notice. Make a motion to pay that for the WPA wall. Second object.
Reese?
I have a question, sorry. Did WPA wall win that? That's not one of the ones that was being held?
No.
So that's one that's being paid?
There's a agreement for that.
Okay, so that's going to be the grant. Okay, then you ask.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rightner?
Yes.
And the last one is to take in quite a bit of $1.5 million that Linda was speaking about a minute ago. DCD, I can make a motion. We authorize the necessary paperwork to be done in the areas of law. I have a grant.
Carl Levitch?
Yes.
Rightner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes. I'll make a motion to pay our invoices of $36,000, $36,230.32 in the general fund, and $1,553.82 from Liquid Fuels.
Second. Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rightner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
We have to present the minimum municipal obligation for the pensions for 2019 before the end of September. So the 2019 minimum municipal obligation for the police pension fund, that's what the city has to pay, is $113,548. And for the non-uniform pension plan, it is $127,670. We don't need to vote, we just need to present.
Thank you, Terry.
Terry, reading the copy of the non-uniform?
It's in the back.
On the back of this book.
Yeah, it's in the back of the back.
All right, music in the park. August 28th, 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM is a Blue River spell. It's the last one of the season. Arts and Curiosities Fest with Wizardry is September 8th, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And Straw Alley in Woodlawn Ave, right near Burger King. It features art, craft, and food vendors with activities. And our next city council meeting is September 10th, 2018, 6:30 PM in these rooms. Is there any audience comment at this time? I will just start from the front and back.
I was about to tell you, 269 on 12th. I was reading on the phone, calling Joel. About the tree situation. Didn't get a phone call, so I don't know what's going on here.
Well, there's a reason you didn't get it. I'll be very clear, okay? The, I did investigate that, okay? I had to be here tonight to do that because of the fact that I want to tell everybody at the same time everything, okay? The issue, as I see it, is that I believe the tree is within the right of law for the tree, okay? Which means that the city would have the possible right to remove it under this current law, okay? The problem is that apparently your neighbor feels very strongly about that tree and is also threatening legal action. I can't get into that too far, but it's my understanding from speaking with council members, and I'm not allowed to really talk about ongoing litigation, as I'm sure you're aware, sir, but there has been litigation threatened if we do cut down the tree, okay? Obviously, you have invested the interest in having the tree cut down. This is why I'm presenting this to the board right now, instead of simply calling you and saying, "You're stuck with this." Do you understand what I'm saying? I wanted to, point simply, make this a public discussion rather than a private one between you and me, if that's okay. And quite honestly, I should have called you and told you that, but I didn't, and I apologize for that. That's my fault. But I don't like to get too far into those discussions for obvious reasons when we're not in a public meeting, okay? The long and the short of it is, the council has the right to remove the tree, not remove the tree. The issue is whether the council wishes to exercise that right. And I'm just looking down so I can remember everything I wanted to tell you. The, and that's up to them. I don't obviously vote for the council. There is, however, the threat of ongoing litigation. What I'd like to do, what I'm going to ask the council to give me the right to do, okay? And the reason, the real reason I didn't talk to you about this is that I'm going to ask the council to give me the power. I haven't spoken with your name, okay? For obvious reasons, he had already spoken to various people. I don't know that he has an attorney, and therefore, I don't know if he is, or he or she, is currently represented by an attorney. As long as they're not represented by an attorney, I'm allowed to talk to them. I'd like the council's permission to speak to that person and see if we can mediate something between the two of you that is mutually acceptable, if you will. If we can't mediate something that is mutually acceptable, it's going to come down to, does this council wish to remove the tree or leave it there? it's gonna come down to does this council wish to remove the tree or leave it there? And if they wish to remove it, we'll deal with your neighbor. If they wish to not remove it, we'll have to deal with yourself. And it may be such that it is, there's no doubt it's also a civil action. A possible civil action between yourself and your neighbor, having nothing to do with the city. The only reason that it becomes having to do with the city is because it sits in the right of way, if that makes sense to you.
Well, why would it be civil when the city sent letters down for people to cut trees down or unmaintained, pushing sidewalks? Everybody else had got that same letter. It wasn't civil for them. So how can it be civil?
Well, and I, sir, I can't even speak to that. I mean, I'm sure you're right. I have no knowledge of that because I wasn't here then. So that's the first time hearing that the letters went out to everybody else and not this guy. So if that's true, that's something else.
He got a letter.
Oh, he did get a letter. It just wasn't just words. Do you know when?
Yes, he asked the city, he asked Rechner if he could just cut the roots and Rechner said yes.
Do you know when that letter went out, sir?
Uh, last year.
Two thousand seventeen?
Yeah.
It was probably earlier than that, but everybody had a choice of what they wanted to do.
What?
Some took the trees down, some put the curve around the tree, the sidewalk around the trees, some put sidewalks on a little bit of arc. Some in Washington Avenue, like that, if you like. Uh, right across from the Lime Street where the hospital building is, they choose to put the sidewalks around the tree. They had since cut the tree down. So it was the option of the homeowner what they wanted to do and that's why the letter stayed.
Well, I know somebody in this room where you made him cut a tree down, get the root out, the stump and fix sidewalks and a cutter.
I don't know.
Yeah, I know. So how can it be civil? The city sent these letters out for people and first off, this tree's dangerous. It's not maintained. So what's the code office stand on that for not having a tree maintained for fifty years? You still got branches falling now. Somebody's gonna get hurt. I told you that last year.
And we, there was four or five of us up there last year. We all were up there the same day with you.
Okay, I want y'all to come out again. I want everybody to come out. The mayor to come out, Joel to come out, Mr. Reese. And y'all take a look at that tree.
That's what we made.
Take a look at it.
Can we also get a copy of the letter that went out?
I'm sure there's a copy of the letters in the files.
I'd like to see. I've never seen so many. I'd like to see.
The, sir, may I ask a, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
If you will. Because we can't have a public meeting at your property um without advertising it. And I know that sounds silly, but if we have a quorum of members of council at your property, that would be an issue. How about if the mayor, Mr. Rechner, and myself come to your property? Would that be acceptable to you?
Of course.
Okay, I, and again, I'm not trying to minimize your situation, but I don't wanna get into any trouble with having illegal meetings or anything like that. Nobody wants that. Um, when, sir, when, I don't know if you mind me asking this in front of everybody, but when are you available?
Tell me when you tell me.
The I don't know what Mr. Rechner's schedule is or the mayor's. I know that I am available on this Friday. Would that be a day that's okay with you?
Enjoy the time.
Okay, um.
Couple of down.
It's understandable. Um, what time would be good for you? Would it be good early in the morning?
Yeah, that would be valid.
Not available till nine thirty.
Oh, you're not available till nine thirty. You were until nine thirty. Would nine thirty be okay or is that too late? Yeah.
Sure, that's fine.
Alright, let's do that. And do you mind, sir, if I take some pictures? I didn't want to do that when I drove by.
You got a good picture. I got all, I got pictures of all the workers in that hole, you know, fixing that break.
Right.
All those roots. I got all those pictures.
I wanted to ask before I brought a camera and assume it was okay.
Oh, yeah. It's not my tree. If it was mine, it would have been cut down.
Understood, but uh, your property will be in the pictures. That's why I'm asking.
It is in there. I want y'all to get the records for the city. I know what they had to spend to get that out of the break fest. Dig up the street, refill it, manpower, taxpayers paid for that.
Well, and?
And it's because of that tree. New roots weren't in my sewer line. It cost me two hundred and fifty dollars to get a plumber out. And you, I don't know how long this is gonna last, but the roots are in your sewer line.
With that?
My sewer line collapsed. That's ten per thousand dollars.
Do you know when that took place?
That was about a year and a half ago.
Twenty sixteen?
Yeah.
Do you know who you had in to fix it, sir?
That was a contractor outside of Sumberry, but he has now retired because I tried to get him to come to a meeting.
But somebody you have contacted?
I haven't talked to him. Well, I mean, I talked to him back then. It was Christmas Eve.
Right, well, I meant, you know how to get a hole in a tree.
Try a little bit more. I'll have to pull up my invoice. And then I had to put a ninety-foot French drain in because of these true roots. Keep the water out of my basin because it broke all my uh gray water pipes. I'm constantly spending money for this tree while he's sitting back doing nothing. Living in with Jenny and enjoying his life.
All I can tell you is we'll be there on Friday morning. I'll have my camera and I'll answer any questions I can for you. Fair enough?
That's fair. I just feel, you know, there's people that will maybe cut trees now because they got the old letters.
Well, I understand.
Took them very serious. That's why I take nothing serious.
I understand where you're coming from completely. If there's something, if the board decides something needs to be done?
We'll do it. Alright, well.
That's all I can tell you. I'm not allowed to vote, so.
Okay.
But answer your question.
It's a story.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Any other audience comment?
I had a question on, on that particular issue. If uh, Joe Bartolo, if, if the city decides not to exercise their right to take that tree down, then are we all accepting the liability that falls and kills somebody or?
The mayor and I just, the mayor asked me that same question, actually. It's a good question. Yes, is the answer. Um, the
Still his property, though. That's the business confusion.
Well, it is and it's not because it's in the right of way, but the the answer to your question, Mr. Bartolo, though, is even more complicated than that. I'm a lawyer, so I gotta make it complicated, but
That's why I had that.
Yeah, you know, the park out here has a bunch of trees in it. Any limb falls off any one of them and hits somebody, we're liable for it. So, point being, it's a
This one's already, the roots are already cut on it, so.
We know we're in a dark way down the road. I understand. And the answer is yes. I mean, if the tree falls over and hurts somebody, theoretically, we could be sued.
And in the pardon, you know, we're not directly next to that tree. That's a hundred-foot tall tree that's around, in a real close neighborhood.
And again, I have no arguments. Um, again, I can't tell you we would be liable. It's one of those things that has to go to court, but we could be liable, yes. Alright, thanks.
Frank, when you were explaining to him about what was this?
Okay, I'll put on Washington Avenue. A gentleman, instead of trying to tree, took the sidewalk and it's perfectly smooth, like made like this, in my photo. Another one went, another one took the sidewalk around the tree.
Okay, I got you.
And it was on their own property that it was done.
Okay, I got you. Couldn't understand.
Yeah. And we have the same situation down on Wall Street. I mean, we've been trying to get that tree down. Ownership's a problem. And a gentleman done the same thing. He put an arc, smoothed it out, put an arc.
Any other comments? Or Janice?
Yes, thank you. Regina Lustel. Um, a quick question, please. Um, there's an elderly gentleman that lives at eleven thirty-five Court Street. About in his late seventies, wife is in a living assistant home and for years. And I can say at least four to five years because I campaigned twice and I walked on, you know, through people's neighborhoods. That um, his front porch is filled with a lot of leftover vinyl siding and construction leftovers. And he's not able to, I guess, spend the money to get repairs or to get it moved. It is a safety hazard. It's an eyesore to that community. And I'm wondering how he can get help from the city. I also understand from the neighbors that he may be related to someone in the code office and that's why uh, the trash has not been removed from the porch area.
Without looking up the address and getting the name, I have no idea.
Eleven thirty-five Court Street.
Okay.
And one more thing, please. Um, last night when I went home on, in front of two hundred Spruce Street, there was a ski boat on a small trailer, literally on the public sidewalk. Now, when I see things like that, what am I expected to do? Because I don't know if your rules have changed now since uh, Chief Miller is gone, who said that we call the code office and the code office, you two would work, you know, uh, together on this. What do we do now?
Simply, you give us a call and if it's, we'll check it out. Got two hundred Spruce Street. You got that, Mike?
Thank you.
Supposed to be a trailer with a ski boat on it, like two hundred.
Yeah, and it has a sale sign.
Parked on the sidewalk. It's not the right corner of the side.
Any other comment? Dead?
Thanks. Two seventy, on the advice of Eric Corrington and Chris Reese. Um, because there was an email of everything that was going on, it was suggested that you go and, you know, file for reports and stuff. Just to kind of get to know what's really going on, so I know. Um, what I found was the report against Eister versus Karlovic on February twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, where the investigator concluded that Eister initiated a verbal altercation. The investigator's recommendation was for all city council members to undergo training on workplace behavior to avoid a hostile work environment. Has there ever been any um, that, follow-up with that? With any of y'all?
No.
And this, because this happened back in February twenty-seventh, so this is, this is quite a while.
Nothing's been scheduled, but none more.
Are you all planning on scheduling anything?
I was gonna say, but we, we have done different things, but there was nothing on, on that.
Well, I just think that with us having all these liability issues and having all these lawsuits and stuff, it might be something that we might consider. You know, because when our city council, everybody gets along here, we, I think it runs smoother when we even have the city council. Seems a lot less stressful, so.
Thank you. Any other comment? Oh, and the back gentleman in the back?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Houseman. My name is Dimas Manalugas. I got the house in uh, forty-nine fifty-one Fourth Street. And I want to know if you got your backyard. You, everybody got a house, alright? And put sign, no trespassing. And if you remove the fence and not respect the sign and make a sole cut, what are you gonna do?
I would call the police department.
Your address is, you say forty-nine and?
Fifty-one Fourth Street.
Forty-nine and fifty-one?
Fourth Street.
Okay, and you're saying a neighbor removed the fence?
Yes, sir. And tried before to fool us me to make an incident without knowing. So, I want to know who protected her, that's Megan there. So three times I put the fences and the fence is removed. Now, I got the fence, might come in over the other end and I see, I leave the fence exactly like that. So, and the big building I have in the back, that's eastern and emergency door for my, for my building. It's big, like a silver bus parking and take a parking for my space. I want to know, everybody make mistakes, but correct the mistakes. And respect one the other. So, what I see not do it?
Mike, you, you, since he brought you up, do you have?
Yes.
The lightness, what's going on here?
Yes. Uh, today Eric and I were with Mr. Pipplewitz and his lovely wife at his property up on, fourth and March, three sixty. Uh, he had a problem with one of his neighbors where they put his
I saw that. No problem.
And they locked, they locked the gate where it's an access to his yard. We just simply went to the neighbor. The neighbor was very nice, came out, unlocked the gate. That one was resolved.
That's it. That's why it was resolved. That was the Arch Street one?
Yes, three sixty, obviously. And then from there, we went to forty-nine and fifty-one. He could show us the issue where a neighboring property on Arch Street, the tenants are taking his fence and removed it so they could use his yard as an egress to get into their property. And we advised him also today that this is criminal trespass. They need to deal with the police department. Uh, we could not control that. And then I had another appointment to, but Eric went with him on the vehicles parked at his property on Market Street, so I can't even comment on that.
Somebody removed the fence?
Somebody physically removed the fence from the post, bent it over. As a matter of fact, he even had, he even had a sign that says
And they're assigned to me side. I'm not trespassing them.
And the front of the property signs out in his vehicle.
It's something they're all. Yeah.
And we explained to him that this is a criminal, criminal issue that he really needs to talk to the police.
Okay. And was the port cord? What about the port cord?
I can't comment on that. I got an appointment to go to. Eric can.
But Eric can, alright.
Did you talk to the police, sir?
I don't talk to police because one time they parked in my place in the Woodland, Woodland Street and I got five spaces in the parking. And I put not trespassing. And the guy working construction and for the Megan and, you know, and parked in my, my place. I put the sign, not trespassing. The next day, the sign was ripped off. And the guy parked in the same, the same space. I called the police. The sergeant coming, looked at the plate and the car and said to the government, he called the guy, guy, guy can't pick up the car. That was two years ago.
Well, that was, that incident was two years ago.
That's not true. I'm talking about how the thing was working here.
The incidents are happening now, sir?
Yeah, now, I'm talking about this happening now.
If you try the, our police department now, there are changes.
No, I don't go to the police department. Because I thought my neighbor's gonna respect the sign.
So what do you expect from us?
Well, I don't know the law. You know the law? And spoke to my neighbor? We have them so.
That's definitely, it's definitely a
It's a wish that the
In all honesty, sir, we can't do that. You have to talk to the police. I'm not trying to be, get rid of the problem.
Sir, I told you last time, I called, sergeant's come, looked at the plate and he called the, the guy who worked in next door construction and take the car and no sign. That's all I want to say.
Okay.
Defiant trespass.
I'm on another thing.
If you, if you were to try it again, if it happens again, if you called the police department, I'm sure the police officers will do their job and due diligence and take care of the situation.
Yeah, but the police can't see the guy who trespassing, you know.
Can I add something to this? Call the police. If the police don't do nothing, you see him because that's the mercy.
The thing that happened, happened three years ago.
But if that happened three years ago, that's
Well, they're taking that fence down. That's, that's
I'll try all the time.
And next time, my neighbor gonna put their own fences and put their own signs. For me, not trespassing them. That's gonna be right. If they, if they rip off the, because more, you know, the old, the old times. The fence is more three times, people live together, respect one the other. And the sign is almost three feet. Now, you have to tell my neighbor to put their own, their own fences and put their own signs. Face the sign, not trespassing, for me. I can explain better because my English is, you know.
You're trespassing on your own property.
Well, if, if she put her own fences, put the sign to my side and say not trespassing for me.
Okay.
Alright?
Okay.
Alright? I don't know if, because the house was old, I don't know if the fences belong to me or belong to her. But the fences was about three feet.
Yep. I, you know, I don't, the only thing I could see during there is, go to the courthouse, check your property lines, and go from there.
Oh, you see it? You see my yard? That's it. There's no bad, no business to trespassing for short cut. Last time, she tried to force me to sign paper to make an easement without expecting me. This is nothing, just to sign a paper. And I was like, because when I live in New York, I've got problem in the pony alley with that, it was fifteen feet for each side. And they piss inside, I called the authorities and the scientists who come and say to me, you see over there, Giuliani, 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 if we give it to him, a hundred tickets, how many you think he's gonna pay? You see, quanta corruption, working, the nation felt. That's all I gotta say.
Okay. Well, I'll check with Eric tomorrow on that other issue that he was.
Thank you. I see everything already, you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comment tonight? Please come to the podium.
Good evening.
Bob Langdon, born and raised in Sunbury.
Do you think, man, that Danny Adams?
My complaint goes more or less hand in hand with this gentleman's. It's like there's, the root of problem seems to be in this town, is there's a definite lack of respect, consideration for your neighbor. I live in seven hundred block of Seventh Street. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and a little bit today, we have bad music blaring, ricocheting your head, apparently you've heard about this. Just this morning, I learned this, yeah, right before lunch, I went calling about it. Saturday, it was ten fifteen until ten at night. It's coming out of the church. It's coming out of the church.
Ten in the morning to ten.
Saturday, it was ten fifteen until ten in the evening. Friday was, I'll say, four thirty to ten in the evening. Sunday, it got shut down early, cranked up about four thirty, only wanted to about eight. But it is, got my doors shut, my windows shut, my TV on, my AC on, moving my block and a half away, and I can't.
I hear the Indian music on my hearing.
I got communications and, they said, there was nothing they can do to happen.
Mike, how many reports do we have of their issues in this church house?
I can't give you a honest answer, sir.
I don't think, I don't think this stuff like Mr. Langdon saying, should be started filing, we'll get a file to be with.
There is, there is files on it. I just.
This isn't the first time that place has created problems up there.
No, I know, we bought one officer venue, so. He came to the house, we discussed it, he went down the street, addressed it to the person, and he left. Within an hour, I had stones through my front windows, stones, rocks.
They're getting out of control.
I know, I can't talk to them, but we are, we are. So, this is maybe a summary of it.
Whoever owns it, responsible out of Irishburg Philly or somewhere.
I don't know.
Philly, Philadelphia.
No, it's not.
One, they used to own it.
It's the church used to own it, and then they sold it to a company out of Irishburg, right?
We're receiving a couple of different complaints regarding the same situation, so we're.
But we have, we do have a history of that, and we do have it.
So, what would you like us to do when it happens?
Well, if it's to a point, yeah, if it's to a point where it becomes a nuisance property, that would make us. And. Not enough in the town of County Communications, but I'm not certain that the call got to Sunbury Police, because it was my cruiser that seen in my area that I saw, and I saw a lot watching, for the weekend. People called either, they called me this morning around lunchtime. Okay, me, Joe Citizen, right? I hear this going on, who do I contact? Just to let you know that it's going on. At the time? Yes. Nine eleven, I guess. You call the police department. Whatever, 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 whatever the number would be to call.
Yeah, call nine one one. But at least that we get it in the file, you know how that works.
If you're confident that will be on file, then they get.
It's supposed to be.
Yeah, it's filed.
Right, it's supposed to be. Who can I call to make sure it gets on file?
Call nine one one each incident, because they're supposed to be saving all these incidents for each home address.
But I think in answer to your question, if you call nine one one and nobody comes out, and you don't specifically talk to a police officer, I would also report it the next day to the code office. That way, we know Sunbury City has received notice of it. If you're not getting an officer to your house, we can't assure you that Sunbury even knows about it, having come from nine one one center, we don't obviously run that. But if you go to the code office or call the code office and make a complaint, then it would be on file for sure.
Just to be clear, you're saying nine one one. I don't call nine one one. I call the seven digit number.
Right.
Communications. All right. Thank you.
Megan, please come to the podium.
Megan, I just have one question and then a clarification issue. The Keystone Resolution effect for grant, what grant, or is that before, or was the resolution I called? I can't see.
Where's the?
Left.
Is that just a separate? That's one project is for.
Yeah.
Breaking social media.
But that's just a separate matching fund, is that?
Well, it might be a small percentage match, if you all wear ten percent to.
But that was, but that was for the CBG funds, or it's for something else?
That was separate.
All right. And the other issue is, I want to apologize, Mr. Pennington, I share a couple property lines, and just as far as history goes, we, I have a property that is man locked, and that happened some time over the years, and it's unfortunate, because at the rear of my building, it's access for two apartments, and just over this past year, a neighbor built a fence which prevents them from having egress on the side of the building. When that happened, I asked Mr. Pennington, if he was willing to sign an egress for me across the back of his property, because there was still an opening there at that time. He said no, didn't try to force him to sign it, obviously, I asked initially, he was, had felt okay about it, and then changes mine, but that's fine. I, as an owner, haven't been made aware of tenants causing issues, so now that I know that, I will speak with them about that, that they shouldn't be crossing this property, and I have them that there's a problem, or that they, the base is sus- so.
Do you know the extent, Mr.?
Yeah, it's, it's really hard to explain, there's like four properties come together all at one point, so, you know where the mosque is? My property is the property next to on Arch Street, and his property is the property next to the mosque on Fourth Street. So, our property is a butt at the back. And then, the next person next to me, we, all of us have fences all coming together, the mosque, his property, her property, and my property, so there's a lot of fences all in one place. And unfortunately, there was this path between my house and neighboring house, which was about six foot.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
About, or maybe a five foot walkway.
The van's trying, it's still vehicle. The hood's open. And the van's trying, silver.
Is it across the street?
It's in the parking lot. The end is open. The door's open. Want me to shut it?
Sure.
Shut it. Sorry, turn it up, we drive.
There's a five foot sidewalk between our property and the property next to ours. So, basically, that neighbor might be able to figure out what's happening there, because they essentially now only have the twenty inch path for my tenants to get all the furnishings and everything back to the back of the house. So, I can believe that someone would have violated his property, although I wasn't aware that anybody would have in any recent time anyways, because I, I have one vacancy there. I will never do what I can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments tonight? Please come to the podium, please.
I just had one question, Bill Skelly from Green Street. Us three are getting, the topic is whole. I mean, I'm in an area, my wife was, we were having coffee, and she said, there was an accident in North. I saw the police department, they hit me over there, and they said, they caught the guy because it was captured, a lot of it, enough of it on their surveillance over there, to find the vehicle, and arrest the individual. And she said, why does Sunbury have cameras like that? And I said, well, dude, then why don't they use them? And I said, they can't put the answer to that. What's going, are they, are they ever gonna use them? We don't have a police board. I mean, that's probably not, it's so cut down, don't you think that would help?
We had money handed to us spent in other areas because of circumstances.
Because of what?
Because of circumstances. It was paid by the owners to pay legal bills.
Woo!
Oh, come on.
Wasn't that funded through a grant?
Yeah, that was.
No, no, the installation, the original one was funded through a grant. The upgrade and what was done, that the cameras, that linked them all together, money was set aside in the beginning of the year, and it was put on hold because of.
Could y'all cut it along?
Legal bills.
Yeah, y'all cut it along.
So, what do they do about it?
So, we're paying for it.
It's something that's gonna have to be looked into for next year.
But I'm sure the budget will be, will have to be the budget for next year, and the money was there.
And to make it accurate straight, I wasn't pointing my finger at you the other night, all of it.
I don't know if Camp Leary has cameras, I think it was a local business that has cameras.
Well, yeah, work, good amount of who had the cameras, they work.
Oh, that's true.
There's gotta be a way, that we can make ours work.
Yep. We gotta stick 'em up, we gotta figure out a way to hook 'em. The cameras are, will operate as just the idea of getting the videos off the cameras at this point in time.
How much money did we have set aside for the cameras?
Fifty thousand dollars.
How much?
Fifty thousand dollars.
Would that have covered the?
It would have covered everything, and the one thing we were waiting for at the time there, which we haven't gotten yet because of what the background, was it okay from the riverfront, the high rise, to stick the antennas up my ear?
Please come to the podium.
So, I just wanna kind of piggyback on to that, we, the RO, as I was, so, earlier in the year, I believe, there was discussion about that grant.
No, not the grant for family.
No, 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 the original grant, that Chris Carney was involved in.
I don't know.
So, my question to one of all is, do we, the city, the council, in fact, have to pay that money back, because it was not?
I don't, I have no idea. I don't know.
Not at this point. There have been no determinations. I can't tell you anything further than that because of ongoing investigations. I'm not allowed. I'd love to, quite honestly, but I can't.
Sure.
But there have been no determinations as to the investigation, as far as I know, nobody has notified me that there's been a final determination.
So, that might be a possibility.
Anything's a possibility. There could be personal liability, criminal liability, there could be, there's a million things that could be involved with that. I mean, obviously, I want to hear, but none of us are here. At least both of us weren't here, I don't know who was here. But the problem, point being, the appropriate inquiries were made, and my understanding is it's under investigation.
Okay. Because the gentleman that did the installation.
We can't comment any further on that topic.
I'm, I'm just making a statement. The gentleman that did the installation was under investigation to begin with, and Mount Carmel would not even hire him. So, that's a red flag.
Sounds like it.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Any other comments? Please come to the podium.
Missy Schaefer, I'm also the Mills Owners Coordinator, and I got asked now, the Fifth Street, Sixth Street, and Ray Street that the gas company has done. Do we have any idea under?
Yeah, we just met with them this morning about that actually.
Sixth Street is practically impassable, and I can imagine school bus go down that street.
Yeah, we just met with them this morning about that. They are gonna redo it. We're back and forth, Department Manager Public Works, he thinks that it might be best not to do the work right now, but let it go through the winter, but just patch it so it's at least more manageable, and then to come back and do the work in the spring, so that it stays better. But yeah, I mean, under what UGI did, it's their responsibility to fix those lanes. So, yeah, we just met with them today about that.
I mean, Fifth Street's hot.
It's rough.
Too bad, but Sixth Street is hard. I cannot imagine.
There's a lot of bad spots through the city.
And that street also, because that, and I know Ray Street's a big last round.
Yep, but that's all we, for this year, I don't know that they're gonna be perfect, but they're gonna prepare them to where it's manageable to drive through to UGI to.
Don't have seatbelts.
Do we have a date when they're supposed to be finished for what you're doing?
Or which project? Two separate projects.
Now, I guess the one that's involving the Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth.
Fourth Street, they're supposed to be finished by October. And that's why they went to the 24 hour, because they got so far behind with all that work, they had to go to 24 hour. The tenth one, they, that one, they just got started on again, so they don't have, we didn't get a timeline, but since they're on the Fourth Street, since that's Penda, they're required to be done as soon.
And the school, they have, they have all the streets shut down in front of school.
Yeah, I mean, I would assume that they've been in contact, the school district did that, but, I mean, they're supposed to be done with that project out there soon, to be able to launch. So, I mean, they're weeks away, so I would think that they would work that part out before it's closed, the school district.
Any other comments?
I have one question, Bob Warland.
Can you say your name?
Bob Warland. W E R land. I was just seeing that there was somebody from the city that they come down and patched the firewall down in the back by the fire police building, down that back, it's like it's a carpeo way around there, goes around the town. I called them since the spring, you know what I mean, get some of them just patched up, they're getting a little bit bad there, you know, if they can just patch that up.
Where's that at?
Well, you know where the fire police building is? Right in the back, they call that, I guess it's, Moncarpe runs this way, but it's also on a map, I see it runs that way, I don't know what, what it really is there, it comes off a wall there. So, you know, just a little bit.
Thank you for letting us know. Any other comments tonight?
Sure.
All right. Next customer meeting, September 10th, 6:15 PM in these rooms. The meeting's over. Thank you all.